Dan.
I didn't see it on board docs.
Please bring it up during board comments.
Yeah, is that where?
It's not on the agenda.
For you to have before we get to your.
Okay, we'll call the work session to order. Ms. Whitten, would you take role for us?
Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor Day.
Here.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
Chairman McDaniel.
Here. This airs is absent, I guess. All right, I believe we have the annual financial report presented by Davenport. Just a quick overview, you can call Davenport's been providing. Davenport's been providing this for several years. It's a great deal of information to consider. They've been able to consolidate it and summarize it into a good overview. I think RT Taylor is with us and attendance to go over. When he's finished with that, he and staff will do our best to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Welcome, Art.
Thank y'all for having me here this evening. What you'll see up on the screen, as Spencer said, there's a lot of information, but we have done our best to streamline it. I'm going to further streamline it for purposes of this afternoon to keep it to ten to fifteen minute time range to allow some at least a few minutes for questions and answers. If at some point later y'all have additional questions or comments, please let us know through staff and we'll be happy to follow up or come back and present further. The the front part of the book in the first couple of sections has to do with doing a look over your financials over the past several years. I'm going to skip to page nine, which is up on your screen here. The upshot of the county's operations over the past several years is that you have been managing prudently to the extent that you have built up your total fund balance, as well as your most flexible pot of monies, your unassigned fund balance monies, and you compare favorably to your peers. That is the upshot of the tabs one and two. The the tabs we want to focus on this afternoon have to do with your existing debt profile, what your debt capacity is, and what your debt affordability might be. Okay, so real briefly, to give you a picture of what your existing debt looks like, the graph on the top left of this page, dark green represents your school's debt and the debt service over time. The light green is the general governmental projects that have been funded and debt finance at your debt service dropping off in 2038 related to the general governmental projects. And then you've got some other, what we're calling moral obligation debt outstanding, and that's in the brown at the very top. So you can see right now at the 2022 levels, your your budgeted debt service is roughly six and a half million dollars. And that's your annual payments all lumped together. Now, some of those funding sources come from like the Mari Service District or the PSA. Some of that debt is getting serviced by resources, which we'll jump into here in a little bit that's in your budget. But you're basically budgeting for those dollars, you do it's do so in a balanced budget format. And you can see all your debt matures right now by 2042. What we're going to key in on is at your current six and a half million dollar budgeted levels, it's going to take a good step down over the next several years, which we're going to talk to ties in with your debt affordability. There's a graph at the bottom right too, to show you the split between the debt service and how it's allocated between schools, general governmental debt, and the other moral obligation debt. Payout ratio, the county has a ten year payout ratio that measures how much of my principal I'm going to pay back in the next ten years. As you can see from this chart, you're roughly at sixty-nine percent, and you compare favorably to your peers. And you're above your policy of fifty percent minimum. For your debt versus your tax base, your assessed value, the county has a policy of three percent. And obviously you are below your policy and you compare favorably to others, your peers. So you have debt capacity of approximately thirty-six million dollars roughly from for the next couple few years. We'll show you on the next couple pages how that can ramp up. For your debt service expenditures versus the rest of your budgeted expenditures, you're at roughly nine point three percent. And again, you compare favorably to your peers. And then tab four. This is where we want to start measuring how much debt capacity do we have to bring on under best practices, new projects. If we were to look at it in a vacuum for the current fiscal year or next year, you could borrow up to roughly thirty-six million dollars immediately and still fit within your policy parameters and best practices that we talked to on the previous pages. If you look over the next couple of years, and the way your debt starts dropping down, as you're paying off principal, as your debt service is dropping down, you have additional capacity to fund potentially up to fifty-two, fifty-eight million dollars, depending how you want to look at it. Haven't got to affordability yet, but that's what you could bring on to your existing debt profile under your policies and under best practices. So with that said, here's where we wanted to, and I know I'm going kind of quickly, but I want to keep the discussion as best we can to the affordability spot, so we can have enough time to ask questions and address those. As we've done in years past, we've coordinated with staff to make sure that we are interpreting your budgeted resources versus your budgeted debt obligations and making sure they're balanced. And that's what this page is clearly showing. You've got your resources well laid out. They're set to match your debt service obligations. And in particular, if you look at the bottom here, the general fund budget covers approximately six point two million dollars of those debt obligations. Okay, different transfers to the different entities, but at the end of the day, what is the general fund supporting? It's the six, six point two million dollars there at the bottom. And just to give you a frame of reference, we always tie it back to the real property tax rate. How many pennies on my real property am I allocating to these obligations? And that's roughly twenty-three pennies. This graph is set up to show you again, the dark green is going to be all of your debt, all aggregated together. The light green is representing how much affordability, potential affordability you have. If you were to hold your general fund budget at the six point two million dollar level going forward. If we were to just budget as we step down, as our obligations step down and just match a penny for penny, dollar for dollar, the difference, the decline in debt service could potentially be absorbed, called it by operations or stuff. So we want to be mindful of what we're potentially keeping in the reserves to be applied toward capital funding. Okay, and so this graph is saying as we step down in dark green over time, we pick up potential future capacity and affordability with the light green. Any questions on that? Because that's a key concept for the rest of the affordability discussion. So the prior page gave you a graphical representation. This page has a little bit more of the detailed numbers look. So I'm going to start working from left to right, column A going through G. And it's going to, we're going to focus in on fiscal years twenty-two and twenty-three to demonstrate the concept of picking up the decline. But after that, as you go down by fiscal year, the methodology will hold, hold the same. So in column A, obviously, we've got our fiscal years. And in column B, these are our debt service obligations, the six and a half million dollars number. That's what you should have seen on your existing debt profile page. So that's your budgeted debt service for fiscal year twenty-two. Then in column C, that's the general fund, what is the general fund resource providing for, and that's your six point two million dollar number. In column D, when we look at what's contributed by the Mari Service District or your subsidies you get from the federal government, those resources go to offset some of your six and a half million dollars in debt service for twenty-two. And then column E just does the math to add up your total resources between C and D. At the end of the day, column F is is comparing column E to column B, resources versus my debt obligations. And in twenty-two, you're balanced. That's why there's no surplus or deficit in in column F in that first cell. And then column G is just simply giving you again, that perspective of you're currently allocating twenty-three pennies. And if we stay the course and hold those twenty-three pennies or equivalent dollars steady, we'll have those applied to the capital program. So in twenty-three, your debt steps down in column B from six and a half to six point two. You've got column C, which again, that we're going to hold the line. We're not going to drop our debt service budget from the general fund going forward. We're going to hold it steady and pick up whatever decline we can for future capacity and affordability. Column D, again, those are your other resources. And then if you add them up in twenty-three and column F, and you compare the two, you're actually picking up roughly three hundred thousand dollars in drop and decline in debt service. That begins to be cumulative down the line to the extent we do not use it. So by fiscal year twenty thirty, we could afford or leverage two point two million dollars in additional debt service for future projects. That's twenty thirty if you're going across the line. Somewhere in there, I mean, presumably we would potentially issue debt for other projects. So it might eat into what what I'm showing you today, what's available in twenty thirty. We could utilize some of that between now and then, but this is just looking in a vacuum at today. Any questions on that methodology? Here is the county CIP as projected for fiscal years twenty-three through twenty-nine, so the next several years. You've got general fund, public safety, public works, parks and rec, and other categories in here, including schools. We do know in coordinating with staff that there's maybe some other things on the horizon that have been, that are y'all might be aware of, but they haven't been factored in here. So we know we got some additional needs. We may have to analyze to see how they might fit into your capital program. But for today, we're talking about this. This set of projects totaling roughly fifty-seven million dollars. What I would like to point out is that on line twelve, those resources that we've got labeled pay-go, those will come either from annual operating surpluses or from one-time uses of your reserves. So that's your cash funded pay-as-you-go projects line item. So we're assuming about four point two million dollars would be cash funded. The other fifty-three million dollars for now, for the purposes of this analysis, we're assuming that we would borrow for those projects as and when needed, which is demonstrated here on this next page. So on the right hand side, we've got our key borrowing assumptions, and we're just, we're not doing anything to structure our debt for now. We're just assuming a a plain vanilla mortgage style financing for each of these. So level principal and interest payments over time. We're assuming twenty-year amortizations and a rate of four percent. Now, that's one thing we're going to also be mindful over time is how interest rates are tracking. But for right now, in the current market, four percent would still make sense. That's a conservative number for a twenty-year financing. And then we would, if we issued in twenty-two, we wouldn't start paying on our debt until fiscal year twenty-three. That's just how we've assumed. And then for each of our fiscal years compared to the last page, we've got where our projects are funded and which fiscal year. As you can see in fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-three, there was about four hundred thousand dollars that we sort of just pulled forward into twenty-three to make more sense. You wouldn't want to necessarily do one long-term financing for eight million dollars and do another one for four hundred thousand. We could potentially combine this and be more efficient with the financing costs. So at the end of the day, we're funding fifty-three million dollars in projects. And taking that concept of affordability that we demonstrated on the prior page. This column is kind of small. That's your existing debt profile, the debt service obligations. Skip this column for just a moment. This would be your obligations with new debt. And then here, this net budgeted resources, that would tie back to the previous data when we talked about the deep. And then column F again, sticking with the methodology, that would measure and do the comparison between your revenue, your debt service obligations. Oh, thank you. Oh, yeah, that's much easier. Thank you. So column F here, that's again, that's the math comparing your obligations to your resources. So in this particular affordability analysis, we dropped in all that new debt related to the fifty-three million dollars in borrowing. And as you can see, it sort of steps up over time. It it hits a peak at three point nine million annually until it all starts to mature. And that's because, again, we're not issuing the debt until we needed it. And over here, you can see where we're, when we go into a mode where we have a deficit on this cash flows analysis, we end up raising either pennies or pulling down this capital reserve fund. And how we fund this capital reserve fund is from that decline in debt service. So you can see that first fiscal year twenty-three of that two hundred ninety-six thousand we talked to through just a moment ago. You'd actually be picking up those surplus. So let me go back to that pages real quickly. There's the two ninety-six again, without putting any new debt in. We have two ninety-six and twenty-three, we have a cumulative four-ten the next year, five hundred fifty-two, five hundred thousand, seven seventy-two, et cetera. It just keeps stepping up because we're not utilizing it. This page, we're saying we're going to utilize it, and if needed, we're going to drop in a penny on our tax rate. That's just what we type. Ultimately, you may end up getting to your revenue sources that you need through various ways. Sales tax that can, you know, be dedicated or however you want to work in your budget, just for purposes of this reference. Getting a sort of trying to plumb from a corner, we're using the real estate tax and showing the equivalent rate impact. Um, any questions on that?
I don't have a question, but just an observation. And I know we have a new finance director that will be working with you. But, you know, the schools have a lot of debt, proposed debt coming on in future years. And I I believe the one thing that we have talked with them about is as they're, they have school debt that's coming off as well, which is part of what you see. You know, we would like to, you know, whatever is coming off, okay, with new proposed debt, but not having an increased debt service that's an increased burden on our citizens. So we'd like to try to equalize as much as possible moving forward.
Okay.
With the the schools have majority of the debt that you you're looking there and and for for good uses. But we we, over the last year or so, we've had those conversations. So we need to work with you as far as when these projects come online, so that we have debt services coming off as well.
That's right. Understood. I like to close with this page only because the natural intuitive question is, okay, well, you've shown us our capacity without new debt. What can we do? Showing us how we could potentially afford it. How does that debt coming on impact our policies that we've set for ourselves with respect to our debt ratios? And that's what this page is showing here is as we drop in that CIP over time, the light green bars stay below the red lines. The red lines are your financial policies, and the light green is the proposed debt. And then the bottom right-hand corner, you can see that we stay above above our policy of fifty percent on our ten, ten-year payout. And that's because we've chosen to assume an amortization of twenty years. So ten years in, you should probably be within a relative range of fifty percent, right? However, if for some reason we need to issue twenty-five year debt for a substantial portion, there's no problem with that. It's just recognizing that on the front end, hey, we're going to reach out a little bit longer, make this a little bit affordable as long as we have a plan to come back into compliance with our policy. That's all. Okay. What we sort of glazed over on the front end when I was going real quickly for getting to the financial checkup is all good. One of the things we know, the county's not rated, but what we would, from our analyses, what we feel comfortable saying is the county would rate very well in in the investment grade range, so in the, just call it the double A category. So we feel pretty comfortable, y'all are in good shape from that perspective. So I want to make sure I got that point across. And then just a nod to Steve Bolser, because I know he always liked to have that question slide at the back of it. We 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 kept that in there.
What are you seeing in the trend? I can see assumptions at four percent, how are you seeing that with the next?
Yeah, that's. That's the twenty million dollar question. I mean, for now, I think it's still a conservative number, but we've seen since the beginning of the year, accident rates have bumped up a hundred, hundred and thirty basis points.
Hey, guys, just just for the.
The question, the question was related to the assumption of four percent in the long-term projections for the debt from the CIP we've presented in here today. The answer is, if we were to go out to the market today, we we would anticipate a twenty-year financing by the county to be below four percent. But that is something we could potentially adjust going forward, because we do know since the beginning of the year that interest rates, tax exempt interest rates have bumped up between a hundred to a hundred and thirty basis points.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The board have any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Maybe just, just a clarification, that might be a better way of describing. But back to page fourteen, RT, where we're, we're debt service versus peers.
Yes, sir.
We're at nine point three.
Correct.
Virginia budget peers are are lower at eight point five.
Yeah, they're lower numerically, but that's, that's a pretty, I would say that's very much in line with your Virginia budget peers.
Your assessment was favorably, and I would just.
Yes, that's right.
I mean, literally, it's almost a, you know, percent less. I just wondered.
Well, and to what we tried to provide to at the bottom right-hand corner on this page, at any given point in time, different localities are going to be in different periods of their capital programming. So whether you're on the front end and they're on the back end, it can crisscross. This is just picking a point in time. The other thing too, is that for, these are the Virginia rated counties down in the dark green at the bottom. Okay, and so we wanted to provide a little bit of the men in the max. So even if we're looking at the median, the one that's right dead in the center, when you stack all these entities up, you know, what is the high end of the range versus the low end of the range? And what you see, your policy's at twelve percent, which is a a good policy, best practices and from the credit markets. You can see from the triple A's, they're twelve point seven max. And then there's another one in the double A range, fourteen point seven. So up closer to that fifteen percent sort of barrier where you're you're trying to think through, okay, well, let's set our policy a little bit below that so we don't plow through that maybe doing our capital program.
Any any thoughts about, and I know you you moved on to the the debt capacity piece of it, but I see we're taking out cares and ARPA revenues over the last five years are growing about three point two versus expenditures of three point six. Any thoughts around that or?
No, I I think y'all are managing to add to your fund balance while still providing services and capital needs to your citizen rate. So I I think you've found a good balance between your revenues and expenditures. Now, that's obviously more to come because you have more pro, more projects to fit within the program. So one of the key things that we've tried to identify particularly and focus on today is that affordability. So that going forward with just identifying what your current resources are being used to fund your capital programming, we want to make sure we keep an element of that, if not all that decline in debt service for future programming.
And the the other piece of the puzzle is our reserves have grown.
Yes.
Because of good budgeting and a conservative nature in our expenditures. But there may come a time when it's feasible to to spend some cash on some of these projects versus debt service.
That's right. We in to the CIP slide, we've included a roughly four million dollars as being funded through cash over the next several years. So we've got it, feel like that's a good balance as well. Because you, it it goes back to the matching principle, CPAs and auditors like that. My background, I was an auditor with Ernst &amp; Young way back then. But we talked about the matching principle, you want to match revenues and expenditures in the period in which you recognize them, right? So same thing, same thing holds true, which citizens are going to be using this and who should be paying for it over time. If you're funding the school today, the same folks that live here today that maybe have built up a pot of money are not the same folks you're going to be servicing ten, twelve, twelve years from now. So it's about spreading the cost over time too, which is another point for doing the debt financing to match up that debt service expenditure to the period in which it's being utilized.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Taylor? We certainly appreciate you coming and explaining and appreciate all of the times we call upon you for for advice, and you're always there to to provide it. Certainly appreciate your service to us.
We appreciate the relationship. So thank you very much for having me here today.
Okay, we have FY twenty twenty-three draft budget review.
Yes, so as you all know, this has been a very challenging process for multiple reasons, but I think we've built a solid budget based on good data for the board's consideration. I'm really grateful for VML VACO's John Montoro, who's online with us, and also Chairman McDaniel and Supervisor Lewis on the Finance Committee for their hard work. And also for Ashton Harrison for hitting the ground running and providing some excellent insights here at the tail end. The budget presented is balanced overall. It represents a significant increase over FY twenty-two. On the expenditure side, we saw most of the increases in the area of public health, health insurance, DRS, and compensation adjustments for staff, but there were everything, everything increases, everything is seems to be doing these days. Additionally, the, there's approximately four point four million of ARPA funds were included in the expenditures. All those, those funds have not yet been designated. On the revenue side, we saw a significant increase in meals and lodging, as well as addition of the admissions and cigarette tax. And finally, we're recommending taking advantage of new legislation, which allows localities to tax passenger vehicles, motorcycles, and campers at a different rate than other personal property. Through a great deal of work by Commissioner White soul and Brooke Tomlin in his office, and also Mr. Montoro, we've been able to estimate. we've been able to est- estimate revenues generated by the personal property tax on vehicles, many of which have appreciated at a very rapid rate. The recommendation is to lower the personal property tax rate for that category from four fifty to three eighty and to reduce the PPT RA percentage by one percent from thirty seven percent to thirty six percent. Uh, for consideration in the regular meeting, Ms. Huffman has provided the required ordinance to advertise for public hearing in parallel uh, with the budget, uh, public hearing process to split those different rates. Um, you have in your agenda package a budget summary and Ashton finalized the draft public hearing notice over the weekend. It's provided each of you with a with a hard copy handout and it summarizes the anticipated revenues, expenditures and tax levies for FY twenty three. And as I noted, John Montoro is again with us on Zoom and he plans to share his screen to show the overall budget summary. But if needed, he can also share the detailed budget, uh, if the board would like to see any of their budgets in detail. With that, I welcome any comments from the Finance Committee.
Well, uh, you know, to echo your thoughts, uh, Mr. Montero and Mr. Weitzel and his office and your help, I know you were overwhelmed for a while, um, to say the least, and having Ashton on board is is helpful as well now. It was kind of a rough stretch there, but we we managed to get through it and I certainly appreciate all of your assistance and help. I think it's good that, you know, we're able to provide our citizens some relief, uh, from the personal property tax by by the proposal of dropping it seventy cent. And, um, as you mentioned, I believe, for close to four point four million of the overall budget increases, ARPA funds that uh, currently we've just put in as a revenue source and and as an expenditure line item, but they have not been allocated at this point. And we'll be working on that over the next several months to to allocate those funds. The overall budget is balanced, uh, we were able to in increase the nonprofit. As you may remember, I believe two years ago, we, some of the nonprofit agencies in our community, because of COVID and all, we had to cut budget by about ten percent, we was able to go back to the pre pandemic level funding for those organizations which provide uh, great services for our community. Uh, we were also able to, uh, work with our, uh, school division. Uh, you may remember, uh, their last, at our last meeting, their their budget request, I believe, was around five hundred and seventy thousand, ended up being around two hundred and eighty two thousand. In the budget, uh, the school division was able to work with, um, within their budget to to find some savings and certainly appreciate their help and, uh, their capacity to to assist in lowering that number. Then
I just want to add to or to continue on that point, I think they were able to, with legal advice, reprogram some funds, which 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 let them use some state funds for purposes that they proved they hadn't been able to, which was able to help them bring that number down for the local fund, for the local share.
Yeah, and and
Local contribution.
Yes, they were, uh, uh, able to, their legal counsel and and Board of Education was able to provide them some clarity, uh, last week on that.
So it was good. We went back to them and said, hey, you know, what can you, what else can you do? You know, that's that's when those things come to light, I think. It's always part of the process of, I'm glad we did, I'm glad they
There, I believe there are still some unknown with within their budget, because obviously the state hasn't passed a budget yet. Uh, but they were working off kind of a worst case scenario, uh, budget wise, and I feel comfortable with that. And then their insurance still is an unknown, they have gone back out to market. I believe they have, uh, received two new bids. Unfortunately, the the bids were around about what her current provider had offered them, so I'm not sure they're going to see any savings there, but but what I had told, uh, Dr. Thompson in our communication was that, you know, if, you know, we have to proceed with a budget as as well as they do, and if something is off, then, you know, uh, he just needs to communicate uh, with the board or with the county administrator and and we would, uh, make the necessary appropriations to to for operations and to keep everything balanced.
I would, I would like to add too, I kind of missed this in my, in my notes in my presentation, but the, um, the school division anticipates a five percent COLA, cost of living in the state budget with the potential for a one percent bonus. Um, and I think the the Finance Committee's recommendation was to fund the local cost of the bonus either through the year end school savings or?
Well, yes, it was, uh, the Finance Committee's recommendation was to go with the five percent COLA for them. And if, because there's some state funds attached to that one percent bonus, if the one percent bonus comes through within the state budget, that we would either look to fund that through end of year, uh, savings as a one time deal this year rather than uh, putting it into the capital expenditures escrow account, we could use it for that. And if that wasn't enough, or or if they were only had a a portion of that amount necessary for that, uh, we could look to county reserves to to fund that one time expenditure. Uh, again, their budget is unknown at this point. Uh, I believe the House version, uh, had a one percent bonus. The Senate version, and I believe the governor's version does not, so, you know, we didn't want to budget for that, uh, within operations. Uh, but we we found a a means to provide that should it be in the the, uh, approved budget that comes out of Richmond.
Uh, further clarification on that statement, I I've heard both of you, you say in this document says, should the state provide a a funding portion of that bonus? The amount that we've allocated is not contingent upon the state providing a fund for that bonus. It is what we're doing, we're not going to do anymore, but you know, that's what we've committed to do in anticipation of that. But I don't, it's not, I don't, I, my sense was we weren't, um, only if the state does that part, they'll they'll have to make that work if they can.
Yes.
But 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 but, you know, but it's not contingent, the two eighty two is not contingent on on a a state share of that one percent. We just hope that that, all those pieces come together and between us and the state, it allows them to do the one percent.
I think the, from my perspective was if it's, if there's money needed above and beyond for that, that's not coming from the the state, that for the bonus in particular, because that's one time expenditure that, um, it would, it would come from year end school savings or if that's, you know, not enough to make it, then potential to look at the county general.
Yes.
And it's, uh, you know, I believe it's the amount that we discussed was two hundred and and nine thousand, because I believe it was eighty three thousand tied to state funding, unfortunately, uh, as we all know, sometimes the state plays a shell game with schools budget. And, uh, if you do this, you get this money, but it's may not be tied to this particular thing, it's tied to this over here, so. But we we discussed all that and 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 feel confident that should the bonus, uh, come through that uh, either through year end savings on the school side or through, uh, a one time uh, allocation from from our reserves, we would be able to cover that. It may not even come up, you know, the Senate and and the governor's version, uh, did not include it and and had a five percent raise. So, uh, we're, we just are prepared in case it should happen.
And I think, uh, John's prepared to share that overview, if there's anything you all wanted to discuss on that.
Good evening.
Good evening, John.
So as as David mentioned, I've got a very summarized version I have, uh, which is the revenues and expenditures by function. I have a breakdown by department. And if you're really interested in getting into the weeds, I have each department's line item breakdown as well, available to look at. I think both David and Spencer summarized things pretty, pretty well. Overall, there's an eight million dollar increase, but it's four point three million is are these ARPA funds. The other increases are primarily in in taxes and the local sales, local taxes, including local sales tax, meals, lodging and the new cigarette tax. Uh, the general property taxes, uh, real estate and personal property. As as David mentioned, you're proposing to lower the tax rate on on automobiles from four fifty to three eighty. The amount changed, I I should point out, is compared to the prior year budget, not what actually was collected in in this current year, so. The increase isn't, I guess, the actual increase to the taxpayer is not as great as what it appears here. This is compared to what was budgeted last year or this current year, now what we're actually anticipating on receiving. Uh, but anyway, that's the income. On the expense side, public safety had the large, large increase, obviously, for various reasons, including salary increases of the state level. ARPA funds here, the exact same amount is is coming in, going out. And I don't anticipate, I don't know, of course, this hasn't been designated yet, so it won't necessarily be spent next year, but, uh, we put it in there just in case to make sure we don't hit in that, in I, in, um, the situation where you'd have to readvertise, uh, the budget because you had to increase it beyond. I can't recall what the percentage is, Spencer.
It's one percent.
One percent, right. Just quickly here, this is just by by department. I know that, I don't, it's probably fairly small for you to look at, and I I can go through this or you can ask questions that. But the, uh, the COLA and the the salary adjustments that we talked about last, we have now been incorporated into the individual budgets. So these numbers are the actual budget amounts for each department. In addition to the five oh one C three, I guess, reestablishing them back to kind of their pre pandemic levels, we also did the increases that you approved for uh, the General District Court, the J and D Court as well, so that that that's all still included in here.
Well, that, they're they're included, but not at the the requested level, I think it was one thousand.
Correct, yeah, right, yes.
It's 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 one thousand for full time and five hundred for part time.
Right.
Correct.
So our our goal, um, as staff and consultants this evening is to have a final advertisement prepared by the end of the regular board meeting upcoming uh, tonight, and if any changes are desired, it would be, you know, beneficial for us to have them. That way, uh, Ashton and and John can can run through them quick, make sure all their numbers match. John working on the budget and Ashton working on the the advertisement, uh, so that during regular meeting, you would have a a new printout if you were to change anything, and that's what you would work off of.
And I I think it's important to to recognize that, um, you know, there's a couple of things, we did the salary study, uh, earlier this year, and it showed we, uh, needed some increased, uh, wages for for some of our people. Uh, the five percent COLA is is in the, um, uh, budget, and that's throughout all the line items. You you do see there's a slight increase, uh, I believe sixty six hundred dollars for board supervisors. That is not a salary increase, if there's one to clarify that. And, uh, then with the, uh, personal property taxes, as John spoke to, uh, last year, I don't think any of us anticipated the increase in with vehicles appreciating in value. And like it did, so, you know, we actually collected more than what we had in the budget. So, uh, by dropping it, it it looks a little bit larger here, but that's, that's not what we actually collected. It's a much smaller number. But typically, we value our our fleet of vehicles in August for for the fall billing. Uh, Mr. Weitzel, uh, through his efforts and and help to to us in the Finance Committee, we went ahead and did that. January, February, March, we were hearing numbers anywhere from twenty percent increase to fifty percent increase. And, uh, so we were struggling trying to figure out, uh, how we were going to uh, anticipate the the increase for our particular fleet of vehicles within the personal property. And, um, I I think we were close at one point to looking at about twenty five percent. And thankfully, um, Mr. Weitzel went ahead and reached out to JD Power and got our our current fleet, uh, evaluated, and it was a look on average across the entire fleet, about a thirteen percent increase. Uh, if we had a budgeted twenty five, we would have, uh, been severely, uh, underfunded there. And the good thing about that is, you know, our fleet will change between, uh, when he did the the request through JD Power till August, but he'll only have to go back and and reevaluate the changes that have happened as vehicles have come off the the tax roll or new vehicles have come on. So, uh, it will be some additional work, but but not a lot. Uh, so that was very helpful to us in in our budgeting process.
So, um, um, just again, we're here to answer any questions that you might have, and if if there was a request for a change, we'd want to try to get that, get that done in the next thirty minutes, so you'll have to look at.
Turn comments from the board.
I certainly appreciate everybody's hard work. It wasn't easy.
There's some compromises in there, Bob. But that's good, we got, we got a balanced budget, so I'm, I'm, I'm proud of it.
Just might want to point out, the ARPA funds, the ARPA funds aren't quite as easy to spend as the CARES Act funds. Apparently, the federal regulations that, and the compliance requirements are a lot greater on these funds than on the CARES Act fund. So when you, when you decide what you want to spend the ARPA funds on, uh, you might want to set aside some to make sure that you're in compliance.
Is there a time limit case when that has to be spent?
Twenty twenty six.
Yeah, that's, it's got a few years.
And John, I think, I think you may be dealing with some bigger clients, but I I think our asking, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we can, uh, anything under ten million dollars that you receive can be designated as, um, essentially lost revenues, and you just tell them what you're expending it on. But, um, I think we're well under that. So we're, we're, we're gonna
Never mind.
Well, no.
That's a one time option, that's a time option that we had to make by April thirtieth, and as you
It's going to be more flexible. It's going to be more flexible for us if we go ahead and take that option and we'll be, we'll be bringing that back forward to you all. That's what I, I mean, I know that's what our recommendation is going to be for the flexibility side of it. Uh, but then obviously we're going to want to recommend and get feedback on very sensible use of that fund. To get the most bang out of it we can. But that's our next, our next project right up soon as we. Get this budget advertised and start digging into that.
There's a public hearing requirement on that as well, correct? Which will coincide with our budget, public hearing?
The public hearing for the, for the tax.
For the ARPA. I thought there, there was a requirement for a public hearing for that as well.
Not for, not to my knowledge, not for the use we're proposing.
Okay. But there.
I think it's inherent in the budget, public hearing, David, is what my take. There is, but we're doing it combined.
Oh, I think I see what you're getting at. If, if we would not have budgeted this number as a revenue and expenditure. It would, it represents more than one percent of our budget. So to come back and add that appropriated later in the year, in the middle of the year, you'd have to have a public.
Okay, yeah. So, so we're knocking it out with, with the. And the, uh. The change we're making to, uh, personal property, that public hearing will coincide with our budget, public hearing, correct?
Yes.
For the ordinance change. And then that's only allowed for three years. Is that accurate?
I believe that's correct.
Yes.
Uh, yeah.
It's three-year window. And I think it's very, it is very important to note that, um. Values are likely to level out. So. You know, that you might have to look at that rate again in the future. I know a lot of localities are, are. You know, keeping it the same and not dropping it very much, but ours. It just made sense to the staff and the finance committee to make this recommendation.
So we just heard. From down, whatever, you know, inflation, everything's going up, uh. It, it's Mr. Lewis said there was some negotiations, but, but we ended up, you know, trying to, to limit the impact on our citizens as much as possible uh, by reducing the rate. And, um. We do have, uh, Ashton on board with us now, but it's my understanding as well that, uh, John will stay with us through the, through this budget cycle. Is that correct as well?
He has assured us that he will. That right, John?
That's correct.
It's, it's been, uh, your, your help has, has been greatly appreciated. Any, any other comments? But. All right, we will take a short break and, uh, start our regular meeting at five thirty. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, we will now call the regular meeting to order. Uh, Ms. Whitten, would you mind doing roll call for us again?
Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor Day.
Here.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
Chairman McDaniel.
Here.
And Ms. Ayers is. Uh, we will now ha- have a prayer for the board followed by a pledge of allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you'd like to join us, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time. We ask that you be with us, boys, as we make our decisions. Get Lord God and direct us to give us our many saints. Amen.
We will hold citizen comments near the beginning of the meeting. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer a comment, to join by telephone. You may dial in to one of the numbers listed on the county website. The webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise your hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. Uh, before we get started, I would like to recognize, uh, United States House of Representatives Congressman Ben Clines in attendance with us tonight. Appreciate your service to our community and to our country. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
Spencer, you may, I just, I was going to say, we need to add, uh, authorization for schedule of V dot public hearing, right?
Well, no, I, that's what I was just getting ready to say. I was just getting ready to tell you all. We were going to ask for that, uh, because when V dot has to give two, two weeks of public notice for their side of it. Um, and the, the schedule that we had set forth was not going to work out. So what I've suggested is that you have the work session on the twenty-fifth. And then have a full month to almost a full month till, to the twenty-third of May to be able to hold your public hearing. That way, if the board wanted to, uh, do some more, uh, looking at it, and it gives, uh, Ms. Hammond a, uh, plenty of time to get the ad out. And I called, uh, Chairman McDaniel today and, um, and Ms. Hammond is good with that as well.
All right, we have, uh, recognitions and presentations, uh. It's National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and we have a proclamation. A proclamation expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Rockbridge County to public safety telecommunications and recognition of public safety telecommunicator week. Whereas the health and safety of all citizens are important to our great community. And whereas the availability of nine-one-one assistance is integral to the peace of mind of each individual and the security of all communities. And whereas hundreds of dedicated telecommunications daily serve the citizens of Virginia by answering their requests for law enforcement, fire and emergency medical services by dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. And whereas the professional public safety telecommunications is that vital link between the citizen or victim and the public safety provider. And whereas the dedicated public safety telecommunications throughout Virginia handle over four million calls to nine-one-one each year. And where it's, it is important for the public to be aware of the responsibility to properly use nine-one-one services by calling only when lives or property are in peril, thus increasing the efficiency of the system and improving the chances that lives will be saved. Now therefore. The Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize April tenth through sixteenth, twenty twenty-two as Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in our community. And we call this observance to the attention of all our citizens and offer our appreciation to staff of the Rockbridge Regional Public Safety Communication Center for their dedication and service to our community adopted this eleventh day of April, twenty twenty-two. You've heard the proclamation. Is there a motion to adopt?
So may.
And second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. And we'll take citizens' comments. So anyone signed up? Okay. Are there any electronically?
No, sir.
Any written correspondence need to be written and read into the record?
No.
Sir, anyone present didn't have an opportunity to sign up, wish to address the board? We have approval of the March seventeenth, uh, twenty twenty-two joint school board meeting minutes and the March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two work session and regular meeting minutes. Is there any comments, questions, concerns about those? If not, is there a motion to adopt?
Move to approve.
And second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
I.
And Chair votes yes as well. We have the consideration of the county financial, uh, packets.
Uh, yes, sir. Just as a reminder to the board, we have two appropriation resolutions. We have, uh, both the county, but we also have a school's appropriation for grants and the capital fund.
Has everybody had a chance to review the, the financials? Any questions, concerns, comments? Okay, the, uh, the first recommendation is a motion to adopt a county appropriation resolution and payment of the bills. Is there a motion to do so? So move. And second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Chair votes yes as well. The second recommendation is a motion to adopt the school's appropriation resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So may.
And second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Day. Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. All right, we have consideration of application for outdoor events, uh, twenty twenty-two balloons over Rockbridge Hot Air Balloon and Music Festival. Uh, Slade?
Yes. Uh, thank you, members of the board. Uh, this is an application for an outdoor event, uh, for balloons over Rockbridge. Has submitted their application for the upcoming two-day event at the Oak Hill property of the Virginia Horse Center, uh, per Article two, section four through sixteen, uh, of the Rockbridge County Code. The event is scheduled for July second and third with possible makeup flights on the, uh, July fourth. Um, the Oak Hill portion of the property, uh, consists of, of the horse center property consists of a hundred ninety-seven, one hundred ninety-seven point eleven acres further identified as tax map number sixty-one dash A dash one, 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 five. And this will be the fifth year, I believe, that this, uh, balloons over Rockbridge is held at the, um, uh, Oak Hill property associated with the horse. And with that, I believe Ms. Dawn Mays is here, uh, to answer any questions or review anything, uh, about the schedule, uh, that I may have missed. Of course, in your application or in your package, it includes the application, a lo- the location map of the Oak Hill property, the two-day event schedule with that July fourth makeup day included, a site layout, the business license associated with it, ABC and. a site layout, the business license associated with it, ABC and insurance information. With that, I'd like Ms. Dawn Mays to follow up with anything I may have missed or review any questions y'all may have.
Thank you. So he covered where we are and what date we're having it, that sort of thing, but we are having free admission and parking. We have hot air balloons scheduled for flights at 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM each day. We have tethered balloon rides each afternoon. We'll have food and craft vendors. We'll allow local nonprofits to set up for free. We have two local bands each day. We have a 5K run walk Saturday morning that is the benefit, the team RB, sorry, RWB Veterans Support Group. And all the proceeds that we get are donated to local charities. So this year we are supporting Rockbridge Area Hospice, Student Activities Fund of Community Foundation for Rockbridge, Bath and Allegheny Counties, Street Ransom. I don't know if you know what that is, but it's they shoot, human trafficking. They try to prevent human trafficking and Mary Carol Moore Scholarship Fund. And then last year's festival, we had approximately 15,000 people there. So they're coming from across the state. They're coming from really as far as Indiana, I think that's also across the country. And they're staying here. You know, they're bringing some business into the county, staying in hotels and campgrounds. So we expect to have another really great year.
Great, great. Is there any questions or comments from the board?
I'd just like to thank the organization for continuing to doing it. Just as you pointed out, it brings a lot of good people to our area to to visit and, and then go home.
Yeah, we need a bigger place. Yeah, we need a bigger place. We're growing. So anyway, thank you all very much.
That's a good problem. We'll work on it. And this does require a motion to approve the outdoor application. So move.
Second? We have Mr. Lewis.
I.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well.
Thank you.
Okay, we have authorization to schedule a public hearing on draft FY 2023 budget. Mr. Suter?
Yes, we reviewed the budget in the work session just prior to the regular meeting. And for the benefit of anyone who's unable to attend, I'll just hit the highlights. The budget that was presented is balanced. It's a significant increase over FY 22. On the expenditure side, we saw most increases in the area of public safety, health insurance, BRS and compensation adjustments for staff, but there were increases across the board in, in most areas. Approximately $4.4 million of, of American Rescue Act funds were included in the expenditures. Those, though, those funds have not yet been designated. So it's a, it's a large chunk of the increases from those funds. On the revenue side, we saw significant increases in meals and lodging and sales as well as addition of admissions and cigarette tax. And finally, we recommend taking advantage of new legislation which allows localities to tax passenger vehicles, motorcycles and campers at a different rate than other personal property. There's a great deal of work done by the Commissioner's Office and also our consultant from BM Melvaco, John Montoro. We've been able to estimate revenues generated by the personal property tax on vehicles, which have appreciated at a rapid rate. The recommendation is to lower the personal property tax rate for that category from 450 to 380, a 70 cent reduction and to reduce the PPTRA percentage by 1% from 37 to 36%. For consideration in the next item on the agenda, Ms. Huffman has provided the required ordinance to advertise for public hearing in parallel with the budget public hearing. I believe John's still on the Zoom call with us. He and Ashton and I would be happy to take any questions you may have. We provide you a hard copy with the proposed advertisement, which would be published the next two Wednesdays followed by public hearing in this room, April 26th at 6 o'clock for a budget and a budget adoption meeting one week later on May 3rd, also at 6 o'clock in this room.
Is there any further discussion about the board? Any questions, concerns, comments? Is there a motion to advertise for a public hearing? So move. And second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well.
Thank you.
Okay, we have consideration to set public hearing on code amendment to establish separate, separate clarification of personal property for certain vehicles.
Chairman, members of the board, as you've been discussing in connection with the budget, there have been some concerns regarding the increased valuation for certain types of personal property such as passenger cars and trucks, motor vehicles designed, specially designed for disabled and motorcycles, mopeds, all-terrain vehicles and off-road motorcycles, campers and RVs. All of these have been tending to increase in value while other items of personal, general personal property are not increasing. So in order to be able to set a separate tax rate for these items of personal property, it was necessary to have enabling legislation. That legislation was adopted in the most recent session of the Virginia Legislature. So that was done to be effective immediately rather than in July 1 and it has a effective term of January 1, 2022 to the end of the 2024 tax year. Calendar year, excuse me. So what I've done is prepared an ordinance. It's included in your agenda packet to modify the county code to establish a separate classification for these items of property. And that will allow in the budget process for the board to set a separate, a separate tax rate for those particular properties. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. Recommendation is to schedule for public hearing if acceptable.
So board, have any questions, comments, concerns? Is there a motion to advertise for public hearing? So move. And second?
I'll say.
All right, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
I.
And Chair votes yes as well. Thank you. Appointments, we still have the RARO Board of Directors to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Henny, which runs through June 30th of 2025. To date, I don't think we've had any applicants. The RARO Director as well as myself have been talking to a few people. At this point, I believe we'll just leave it vacant until we have a suitable candidate. But if you have anyone in mind, please, please direct them to Mr. Coffee or, or myself. Be happy to talk to them. The monthly staff reports, has everyone had a chance to review those? Is there any questions, comments, or a motion to accept the reports as presented? Move we approve with.
Thanks.
And second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Lewis.
I.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Is there any board comments, committee updates?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think a place that everyone's seat draft ordinance that I'd like to have put on the agenda for first meeting in May. I've worked county attorney and sheriff, county administrator, and, and it's been to the Commonwealth Attorney and, and so hopefully we can discuss it at our May meeting.
That's, this is the first I've heard of it. It's
That's the first time it's been given out.
Yeah, it's a big change. So, you know, I, I'm not sure that in, in that amount of time, I would have time to do, feel like comfortable doing my research and talking to all the people that you've talked to, you know, to, to to come to an understanding of it completely by, by the May meeting.
Well, it's for discussion at the May meeting so that we can discuss it.
Well, I, I mean, I'll be prepared to discuss it, but then.
Okay.
But I was just gonna ask for a little more time, but I understand.
So the, the change or the discussion topic is ordinance to amend Article 2 Dogs Division 1 generally of Chapter 5 Animals and Fowl of the Rockbridge County Code to add new section to regulate habitual barking, howling or yelping dogs?
Yes.
So your request is to add it to the first May meeting?
First May meeting for discussion.
For discussion. And Ms. Huffman, if, if we discuss, if it's added to the first May agenda, we discuss it, then it would have to be followed by a later meeting for a public hearing to, to enact or change such ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct. In your discussion, you'd have to, or even at a later discussion, you would have to authorize scheduling public hearing because it is a part of county code.
I understand Mr. Lewis's concerns with, with, with time, but seeing as how it's just for discussion, I don't see any issue with adding it to the first May meeting. And through that discussion, then that will lead to the timeframe necessary for public hearing and, and altercations or, or changes to it as everybody may see fit. Correct?
It's correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any issues with that? Does that require a motion to add it to, or is that just by?
That's usually at the direction of the chairman.
Okay. We will add it for discussion purposes to our first maybe. Is there any other board comments, committee updates, anything? As far as the request from Mr. Lyons to add it to the agenda that there's is there any reason to discuss questions tonight, or should those just be directed to Mr. Lyons until we have it on our agenda for discussion?
Uh. Okay, can we discuss it tonight? I mean, I guess.
You, the board typically will discuss items that are brought up by the, and board comments. But I'm happy to answer any questions separately as well.
Go ahead with your question. Does anybody else have any? None. We don't have any public hearings.
I think they're all scheduled for next meeting.
Yeah.
All right. Hearing no other comments, is there a motion to adjourn? And a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
I.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well.